Good evening. Welcome to the April 6 meeting of the Mount Vernon Board of Education. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Gorman, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Red.
Present.
Trustee Turnquist.
Present.
Trustee Crump. Trustee Mitchell.
Present.
Trustee Patterson.
Present.
Trustee McOwen.
Present.
Trustee White.
Present.
Trustee Saunders.
Present.
Trustee Miller.
Present.
Quorum is present.
Excellent. Well, first of all, good evening, everyone, and we can't, I can't say how exciting it is to be back in the Board of Ed building for our meeting. I think this is our second in-person meeting for, in a year. So it's really wonderful to be back. It's wonderful to see our fantastic administrators, and we really appreciate all the COVID precautions that have been provided for us so that we could assemble. Now that our students are phasing back into school and our teachers are phasing back into school, we wanted to make sure that we were also in person. So here we are, and we look forward to having a productive meeting this evening. Are there any communications from the public?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, trustees and school district leadership. I was encouraged to see the March 9 trustee body took time to address my questions regarding an African-centered curriculum. However, I haven't heard back from any official or representative of the current curricular policy that would suffice the expectation about which it was said that I would be excited to hear about any developments in curricular conversation. I am heartened to have heard to the, I am heartened to have heard of the content discussions around meeting material and specific themes in certain African-American cultural literature, but I'm hoping that we don't get diverted into superficial euphemisms of diversity, inclusion, or other talking points that deflect from the basic historical injustice of exclusion from academic rigor, the place and role that Africa has played in the global humanity and all civilized human activity, from the sciences to the arts industry and social environment. Please direct me as to where any such policy discussion has already occurred, if it has, and if any policy has been drafted. Looking forward to your engagement, Jeff Monroe.
That concludes public comment.
Can I address?
Yes, please.
So I need to get Jeff Monroe's information. Did he leave his information?
Yeah, we have his information.
So just give me Jeff Monroe's information, and then Jeff Monroe, Cynthia Turnquist will get in contact with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Turnquist Jones. All right, reports from the superintendent.
Yes, let me just write that follow-up. Okay, good evening, everyone. Good to see you all back again in person. Now we get to experience what our kids feel like behind these shields. I'm not sure I like this, but I do feel safe. So I do have a couple of items I'd like to share with you this evening. The highlight of my report, of course, will be our budget presentation. So while that's being queued up, a couple of items I'd like to just share with you. First of all, the Denzel Washington School of the Arts at the Nellie Thornton Building will present its spring showcase on April 8 at 6:00 p.m., and this will be viewable on YouTube. And Dr. Collins sent me a message today as we were talking about opportunities for students to experience the arts in this environment. The utilization that the pandemic has created has impacted our students' ability to provide authentic connections to their school experience because of the lack of opportunity to perform in a performing arts school. So she has proposed that the program requires students to rehearse via Zoom with their teachers and come into school to videotape their performances. This included in-school as well as our remote students. The program included over 100 students in performance and those students who are working behind the scenes in the production aspect. As you know, we've been really working to expose and explore more behind-the-scenes opportunities for students so that they learn the mechanics of theater productions. So she has accomplished that in this endeavor with this spring showcase. The production was shot over two days at the Felicia Rashad Auditorium utilizing social distancing, disinfecting after every segment, and wearing vocal and musical face masks. The result was the creation of what I believe will be a stellar performance. I've seen the clips of the promotion, so I hope that you will avail yourselves on 6:00, at 6:00 p.m. on April 8 via YouTube for the premiere of the Denzel Washington School of the Arts at the Nellie Thornton Campus for the arts showcase.
Dr. Hamilton?
Yes, sir.
Hi.
Hi, trustee.
Can you send around that link?
Sure. Actually, yes, I will do that.
Thank you. And how are we going to publicize this?
There's actually a promotional reel that's out already. It was in the, was it the district desk that went out, too, sir?
It will be, yes, tomorrow, district desk, and it was on social media today.
Yes.
Are we doing a robocall?
We have not done a robocall, and we generally don't to promote school events like that. School-based, you know, principals can do their own, but we generally don't do district-wide for school-based performances.
And last question, if I'm correct, this type of performance, had it been held in normal, non-COVID times, would it require admission or donation suggested?
Absolutely.
So for those of us who would be perfectly willing to donate to see it in person, we should do the same?
That's a great idea.
Via YouTube. So how can we, how can members of the community who want to contribute what they would have paid for a ticket, how can they do that?
I don't know that. I don't know the mechanism of that, the mechanics of that, I'm sorry, but I will ask Dr. Collins to look into that.
Set it up, thanks.
That's a good idea. Thank you for that. We've also received notification that the swimming pool, we are clear to operate our swimming pool. Yep, yeah. So we're not clear on the pool capacity limitations yet, but we will work on that simultaneously while we work on getting our lifeguards certified for pool supervision. So we're in the process, as of today, with recruiting students to be certified as lifeguards so we can get the pool up and running. So that is very good news and perfect timing for the weather and the onset of spring and summer and some resemblance of normalcy for our students and community. Just by way of information, just wanted to let you know that we did run our FAST program again this past spring break, this past break last week. And just comparing the winter data to the spring data, while we had about 25 fewer students, we had 90% attendance in ELA and 83% attendance in math. So something clearly happened between the winter break and March break that there was such a huge jump in participation. So by all means, it looked like it was a successful endeavor and well worth the effort to provide this tutorial service for our students. And lastly, again, just for your information, our Phase 2 in-person students returned today. So we have 440 more students today than we did pre-break, pre-spring break. So that is very good news, and we're hoping to see that number continue to increase, of course. And now for our budget presentation. Thank you, sir.
Play it through my laptop.
Say it again.
Play it through my laptop. You should be good.
Okay. What I'm going to do, Dr. Gorman, if you can send this to me so I can kind of navigate from here, as, no, I don't need to navigate, I just need to view it from here so I can see it.
Can you do that?
You have a lot of confidence in my vision.
Not a problem.
You too, bud. You mean the 2020 part? Which part of your vision? Turn around like this. I didn't get anything.
All right. So first of all, I want to thank our, thank you, sir. I want to thank the members of the Budget Committee for all of their work on this and for helping us put together this fiscal plan around educational equity and helping our students to reach their full potential. The plan, of course, begins with our vision, mission, and vision statement, and also our board goals, which we provided a superintendent status report on the 2020 goals, I guess about two meetings ago, maybe three meetings ago now, and those goals are included here. The goals include the indicators of success as outlined in the board retreat of August 2019, and that information is here. Board, you've seen this 100 times, but it's for our viewing public, so I'll just, in the interest of time, get right to the nitty-gritty of our budget. So the philosophy behind the creation of this budget is really one about investment, investing in the future of our community, investing in our students, and investing in our teachers. It is constructed to support the district's mission and vision statement, the vision being our utopia. So the budget looks very carefully at the vision statement and what are the strategic, what strategic approach will we take to make our vision, our utopia, a reality. The presentation is a tentative budget because we still do not have our state aid numbers. We've been expecting those numbers to come in daily. In fact, every day they tell us, and it'll be out today, and those numbers still are not out. But it is based on the fact that we have some realities that we have to face relative to some contingencies associated with state aid. While creating this link between academic excellence and fiscal planning, of course, we are heavily reliant on state aid as a district. This budget captures assumptions about funds captured through the current fiscal year. There have been some costs that we've been able to save. Although there have been additional costs that have been unanticipated, we have saved some money in some other categories, and we'll share more with you about that momentarily. The 2020-21, 21-2022 budget presents a fiscal plan that addresses the unique, challenging, and changing situation as a result of COVID. Even as we resume some normalcy, we know that COVID is not going away immediately, and there will be remnants of COVID that will be around for a while, and we need to anticipate, plan, and ensure that we have the fiscal supports in place. It is also designed to ensure a positive impact on programs, staff, and sustainability of the programs that we've implemented already. If you will recall, about six years ago, when we were talking about fiscal planning and looking at a multi-year plan, the board at that time, and it has continued, has been committed to making sure we were not adding programs and services that we would later have to decimate or cut. So every program and every district initiative that we've put in place, we've done so with the vision of sustainability on the horizon, and we've been able to accomplish that. Through this budget, we've been able to navigate some very unusual and unprecedented times. The board did direct a $7.5 million cut. That turned out to be a very wise decision. It helped us to put ourselves in a better fiscal position as we anticipate some serious realities before us, including the fact that we still have about $16 million in uncollected school taxes that the city has or should have. We've been able to mitigate a shortfall in the tax revenue by implementing this budget cut that the board directed. We've been able to provide sustainability and stability and not needing to borrow. In spite of the fact that we've had this $16 million shortfall, we've been able, through the support of the business office, the Budget Committee, and the stewardship of this board, to not need to borrow. And not very many districts were able, are able to do that, particularly with the history that we have relative to not increasing taxes effectively for seven years now. The budget looks at state aid and unfunded mandates. There are some things that you will see as we go through this budget presentation that are non-negotiable, things that are fixed costs, that we do not have the luxury of being able to modify, change, reduce impact or influence, but schools have to make provisions for them and what is necessary to continue to navigate our way toward excellence and provide our students with the best educational opportunities available. We began collecting our taxes last year. This has provided an immediate cash flow for us to circumvent, circumvent sounds a little more deliberative, but in order to prevent the city from holding on to our money and putting us in a very compromised financial situation. So we have been successful in collecting that. We have collected about 97% of our taxes in both collection cycles, and we will be talking about what we will do relative to those uncollected taxes in the next few weeks, and we will need your board influence on and input on that as well. We have carefully tracked spending and revenue, and kudos to the business office for being so diligent with tracking our spending and our revenue and making sure that there is a balance between the two so that there isn't more, there isn't spending that is misaligned with revenue, creating, therefore, creating gaps. And lastly, strategically, using reserves to support past zero-tax levy increases. And we're going to talk a little bit about why we are proposing a tax increase on this budget. It is not because we are in a financial situation where we must raise taxes. We need to raise taxes in order to align ourselves with future planning and to anticipate what we believe will be issues that the district will face in the future. And in order to do that, we have to increase our credit rating, which, because we have not, partly because we have not raised taxes, has declined. And I'll give Mr. Silver an opportunity to address that momentarily. And now with our restricted and unrestricted reserves, they need to be replenished. Our fund balance in particular needs to be replenished. Mr. Silver, you want to talk a little more about that, please, sir?
Sure. Thank you, and welcome. Mr. Redd, I've never even shaken hands with you, elbow. So there are two types of reserves, restricted reserves and unrestricted reserves. We can go to the next page, and we'll talk about this.
Okay.
We have used our restricted reserves every year to help reduce the budget. That's the column in red in the middle. The column on the next one where it says remaining balance, that's what's left in the restricted reserves. Our restricted reserves are running dry, meaning if we're using, on the first one, workers' comp, we're using $18,000 in this 21-22 budget, we have only one year left, and then it's gone. The same thing for the retirement contribution. We're using 245 this year, there's only 247 remaining. So this needs to be replenished, and we are hoping that if the state aid comes in properly, we will be able to replenish some of this. There are, there are several reserves that we would, good thing I know this.
Yeah. I was.
There are several, there are several reserves we would like to establish that we do not have right now.
I was sanitizing Jeff's laptop for a second.
He gave him the wheel.
So should I go on?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So there are two reserves we would like to establish. One is called Teacher Retirement Reserve, TRS. This was recently enacted by the state, allowing us to put money aside to cover some of the expenses of teacher retirement. We have an Employee Retirement Reserve, and we have for many years, that's ERS. That's in that list in the red, and that's going to expire soon as well. And there's another reserve we would like to establish called the Capital Reserve, where if we want to do projects, we don't have to actually fund it out of the budget immediately. It can be partially funded and partially paid for through a capital reserve. Those two would be restricted reserves only for the purpose designated by the board. And so we are hoping if we have enough money, we'll be able to put aside, we'll be able to replenish the restricted reserves and establish those two new reserves. Then the other type of reserve is unrestricted. That's money we can just do anything with that we want. We can use it to offset budget increases. We can use it to cover sursuriary expenses, because you may recall, we don't budget for sursuriary because we have no idea what it's going to be. So we have restricted reserves for sursuriary, and there's about $2.4 million remaining in that, so that will not be expiring. All right. $2.4 million remaining in that. Oh, no, it's 3.3 million remaining in there, and we never actually use that. We use that as we have a bill to pay a sursuriary. So our reserves, our unrestricted reserves are essentially gone. They're gone because of the $16 million that we did not get from the city, $9 million of which, or $10 million of which, we would normally get anyway, and there's always some backlog for taxes not paid for a few years. We need to replenish this. If we had had the money from the city, we would have a very healthy reserve right now. But with the guidance of the board, we did cut over $7 million or reduced the budget by $7 million, and right now, whatever's, whatever's left, we're going to use some of it to offset increases in the budget, and the balance will go towards improving our reserves. Dr. Hamilton mentioned earlier, because our reserves are gone, because we have not increased taxes, our credit rating has been dropped by Moody's or Standard &amp; Poor's or both, such that it would be difficult for us to borrow now, but as soon as we fix these things, that will change that credit rating.
Now, if we were in a situation where we needed to borrow, we could.
Yeah.
But obviously, the better your credit rating, the better the rate. It works the same way as anybody else when you're applying for a mortgage or any other kind of loan. The better your credit rating, the better the rate. So our goal, of course, is to get to the highest rating assigned to school districts so that we can get ideal rates should we need to borrow. And the borrowing isn't necessarily about a budget shortfall, but as we anticipate building construction, the emergency repairs that need to happen sometimes, or safety issues in our buildings that may require more than we can put in a general operating budget as it relates to capital projects, we need, we need to be in a position, and frankly, it would be irresponsible for us not to put ourselves in a position so that if we needed to exercise that option, we would be in the best situation possible to do so.
And that type of borrowing would typically be very short-term, 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, and that could be a revenue anticipation note called a RAN or a tax anticipation note called a TAN. One of those two ways is the way we would do that. So this is, this slide has to do with the Budget Committee, members of the Budget Committee, and their work through the year. So they have helped us to do this spending, tracking our spending, doing this dashboard that we've developed that you have seen, and we track our revenue, including state aid. We had anticipated a big cut in state aid, never happened. And in fact, we have now recovered almost all of the state aid that was withheld last year at the very end of the year. They took 20% of the balance of the state aid and didn't give it to us. We now have almost all of that back. And the Budget Committee also does share ideas with the board, and their ideas and their input help to shape this final document that we are showing you tonight.
Okay. And so those members in particular are Board Trustee Melissa Munoz-Patterson, Board Trustee Wanda White, members of our community, Rick Powers, Tom Keller, Lynn Sarver, Ken Silver, of course, our business administrator, Saji Zachariah, who is our treasurer and director of business, and our newest member to the district, Amin Mozeli, who is the assistant business manager. So again, thank you for your countless hours volunteering to, to serve as an advisory group for this, a creation of this budget. So the Budget Committee looks, if you look at these three buckets, the Budget Committee has helped us to track spending, to ensure it is, its alignment with board goals. So there's a process that we have been using since I've been in the district that I created called OEE, or Awkward Straining Effective Effort, where we match expenditures to board goals. So when principals or department leaders or directors meet to defend their budget, we look very specifically to see how it is aligned with our board goals, our mission statement, and the needs of that particular school. So as we apply the theory of equity across the district, clearly there are some schools, some students, some programs that need more support than others, so that we, we ensure that these, these resources are distributed in a fashion that represents the issues of equity that we've been spending so much time talking about over the last several years in our district. And of course, the state aid matter is one that we really don't control, but we have been, as a district, very actively involved in advocacy for the district, specifically making sure that our legislators are aware of our circumstances and our situation here in Mount Vernon. As you can imagine, they all have constituents, they all have communities that they represent, and they may not always be familiar with the unique features of each district. So what I have been doing, frankly, is parlaying those relationships to make sure that when bills are introduced or when conversations ensue relative to how funds should be allocated, they can speak clearly and articulately about the unique features of Mount Vernon. And so I really have to salute those folks who have been our champions, Senator Biagi, Congressman Bowman, Senator.
Bailey.
Bailey, and of course.
Pretlow.
Pretlow. I was getting ready to call him by his first name, and I was trying to catch myself. Of course, Assemblyman Pretlow. And we have just had some incredibly supportive people who have made Mount Vernon a priority and have taken every call I have made and have listened to us. So I, not to get political, but I do want this board to know, and I've been keeping you up to date in the weekly confidential, that we do have friends in Albany who have really listened to us, and these, these people in particular have heard, have heard us. And then lastly, to share key ideas with the board, with the business office about efficiencies and budgeting fiscal priorities. As it relates to improving academic achievement, Dr. Gorman is going to talk a little bit about this particular slide, specifically as we look at our reopening plan and our innovative solutions and our efforts to provide an excellent, superior educational opportunity for our students.
Good evening, all.
Evening.
And so I guess the biggest swing in the last year as it re, applies to our reopening has been an influx in technology and software and getting instructional tools for our students. And literally, we went from 250 devices to over 7,000 devices for teachers, for staff, professional development, implementation, parent training by the Office of School Improvement and our professional development workshops, continuous efforts, Wi-Fi, Mi-Fi hotspots for kids that did not outreach to parents and communities, and obviously, this was not in our budget. But we are glad, in a lot of ways, that we were able to close an equity gap that had existed in this town. And you see that from the testaments of parents and kids that said, they didn't even know how to use a computer. And it's just such an assumption that, you know, we've been trained because we live off our computers, but not all of our children do and not all of our families do. So that was very eye-opening. And so we continue to forge ahead to give our kids the tools that they need to be competitive locally, statewide, and nationally.
And I think it's also important for us to understand that there are some unique characteristics of, of our district, but districts in general as it relates to enrollment. Generally, there is a, during the summer, there is a large number of students who transfer out and a large number of students who transfer in. This year, with COVID, we have not seen the same kinds of patterns. So there are students still unaccounted for that we need to make sure that we continue to plan for as we don't know where those students are, and we anticipate that as we phase out remote instruction across the state and as we begin to resume more and more full-time in-person instruction, that those numbers are going to change. So our budget is based on the, those unknowns as well, and, and looking to make certain that we have not, that we don't budget for a lower number than we actually that we don't budget for a lower number than we actually have in our district. The district remains committed to equity and access, as I mentioned earlier, for all students. And we want to also understand the importance of anticipating the COVID slide or what we think will be opportunities for our students to need additional supports and services for lost instructional time. The executive summary is pretty straightforward. It has been, this budget has been carefully developed to align the goals, as I mentioned, and focus on developing the past 2020 vision for the district and moving forward with a new vision. We should, this board and administration should take tremendous pride in the fact that we have completed the 2020 vision with fidelity. Every item that was in that 2020 vision has been accomplished on time, on schedule, and with fidelity. And we are now focused on not programs and services, but academic achievement and providing the support that students and teachers need in order to do that. The district has been committed to minimizing the impact on our local taxpayer. As mentioned, and it is worth mentioning again, we are the only district that has not had a tax increase for seven years. And the one anomaly was 0.89%, which some argue is, because it's less than 1%, it's virtually no increase. But that is not without some barriers. And we talked about the credit rating being one. It also has created an opportunity for us to look at how our fund balance has been impacted. Again, already discussed. But I want people to really understand why it is very important for us to recommend this 1% tax levy increase this year in order to put our district in the best position possible for long-range planning. Again, this is not to suggest that we have any, we're in a financial crisis, because we're not. But we do need to think in terms of long-range planning and future boards, future administration, and students that are yet to be born, who will be in our classrooms. This 1% increase will be the second in eight years. This plan includes contractual obligations, benefits, the pre-K through eight reconfiguring plan. It will be sustained in this fiscal plan. Facilities, planning, and continuity of programs for our high schools of choice, supporting technology, putting an infrastructure in place to ensure not just that our students have devices, but that our teachers have the professional development that they need in order to be able to keep up with technology and advances in technology, that we begin to transition and migrate from the textbook replenishing to a more digital-based platform so that students are getting updates immediately and not carrying these books. This is going to be a multi-year process. We can't just get rid of textbooks altogether. But we do have a plan. And this budget is the beginning stages of that plan. We will also be looking at creating systems for increased accountability and efficiency and raising expectations for our staff and students. So that's the next leg of this journey. And this will happen by putting a focus on literacy and numeracy and making sure that there are the best practices for teaching and learning are in place across the district. And it begins with the fact that this 2020 vision has come to fruition, and we are now post-2020 in our strategic planning. So what does this 1% increase represent for the average assessed home in Mount Vernon? So for the average assessed home, it's approximately $8 a month, or $96 a year on the average assessed home. So if the, it's important that people understand the difference between market value and assessed value because they are not the same. Your taxes are based on assessed value, not market value. So you may be able to sell your house for $800,000, but the assessed value may be $20,000. That is what your taxes, how your taxes are calculated. And that's how you determine how this proposed increase impacts you personally. Mr. Silver?
So there is a formula to convert assessed value to what the actual selling value of the house would be. And I'm more than happy to share that. The Assessor's Office shared that with us today. So here's the breakdown. Remember, we don't have a state budget. We don't have state aid. We don't know that. But it breaks down, can't see that too well. So our fund balance is about 3% of the budget. This is based on the governor's proposal for state aid. And it does not provide us with sufficient monies to run the district. We have property taxes. That includes the 1% extra. That's about 53% of the budget. State aid is about 40% of the budget. And other revenue is about 3% of the budget. So those other charts show property taxes. You can see on the top right, property taxes have changed very little. This changes from $910 per thousand to $919 per thousand of assessed value, or slightly less than that. And there's other revenue, which is a lot of detail. And the state aid is the big thing. We've been told that we could expect an increase in foundation aid, but we haven't seen it. We've also been told, as late as 6 o'clock this afternoon, that there is a plan to institute full foundation funding over the next three years. We don't believe that's going to be in this year. But all the money they have owed us for all these years, we've been told that we will be getting that over the next three years. Something also happened this afternoon. Dr. Hamilton and I have always mentioned to the legislators how much old building aid the state owes us. Somewhere between $6 and $10 million. The governor had proposed removing that, that it would just disappear, and they would not owe us that money. And we got word this afternoon at 6 o'clock that that has been removed from the state aid. They will still owe us this money. Of course, we're supposed to get the first of it around 2027. So I'm not sure who will be here. I'll be here. So I think, go on to the next slide.
I'd like you to spend a little time, Mr. Silver, just talking about the bar graphs that are here.
Sure.
Because I think it's important for the public and our trustees to understand.
Sure. And the bar graphs that are coming up will show also our taxes and budgets through the years. So the fund balance one shows the restricted and unrestricted. In the thatched part, that's the unrestricted. And in the solid part, that's the restricted. And you can see how we've used most of the restricted state fund balance through these years. State aid, right now, on the governor's proposal, it is down from the current year. But again, we don't believe that will happen. There's other things. There's BOSI's aid. That's a part of the state aid. There's transportation aid, there's building aid. And our bond was almost all aidable. And that has helped us with our expenses as well. The cafeteria has been a problem for us through the years, through this year. And we've had to help the cafeteria because of the unexpected costs of that. What else is here?
I think you got it all.
I think so. So the circle on the right, we are going to, the next slide or two is going to describe that in detail, the focus. So right now, without the state budget, we have a freeze on foundation aid. It's affected this year and caused us to have to reduce the budget at the board's direction. We also have a reduction in our special education aid. That's called STACK system to track and account for children. This is special ed, this is down. And the COVID is unfunded mandated expenditures, which are now in excess of $1 million. And we'll show you how the state has said we've gotten that back, but we haven't. And we'll show you exactly what that means. So we're saying any unspent money from 2021 will be used to help balance the next year's budget, or part of the money will be. Part of it needs to go into reserves. So there's something called the CARES, CARES money, which the state said we were getting some $3 million in extra money. But what happened was, they had a $3 million deduction called pandemic adjustment. They took away the $3 million. Then they gave us back the $3 million and said they had given us additional money. That would have been not great. But what happened was, in addition to giving us the money back, they also said that we had to give the private and parochial schools some $300,000 of the money that was just supposed to be for us. And then we had some $800,000 to $1 million in unfunded COVID expenses. And so we're about $1 million one down, even with this alleged CARES money that did us no good whatsoever. All it did was restore most of what we got, less about 10%, which had to go to the private and parochial schools.
But it did help support some unanticipated costs, like the shields before us today and other kinds of unanticipated COVID-related expenses to try to keep our schools and staff and students as safe as possible.
Okay. So again, we talk about using, moving the money forward, or most of the money. We replenish reserves. We are projecting right now about $5 million of the leftover money, if that holds up, to go into next year's budget. And the balance to go into helping the reserve fund. And we've mentioned there that we've helped to replenish the cafeteria fund, which has had a problem. And we have still not received our $16 million or any. The last time we received any money from the city was August. And so we've received nothing in all these months.
And just before we leave the CARES Act, the other thing I wanted to point out is it relates to COVID, unanticipated COVID expenses, which is very hard to quantify, frankly, is we had many teachers who were working remotely or quarantined or sick, unfortunately, with COVID or were able to, because of executive orders, able to take appropriate leave time for family members when COVID was at its peak. And there were additional costs associated with that because these people were still being paid, and we had to hire people on a temporary basis to cover those classrooms or provide those services. That was a huge cost, obviously. As you can imagine, you're essentially paying, in some instances, two people for the same position. That was not an anomaly to Mount Vernon, obviously. But we did work to try to mitigate that as much as possible also that the impact was minimized to the extent possible.
So we will, the next time we meet, or maybe before the next time we meet, we will have what's called a three-part budget. It talks about program, which is instruction, talks about capital projects, or capital part of it, and it talks about administration. We work every year to try to reduce the administration percent. And we believe that this will be down slightly this year, this coming year from the year it is, from the, it'll be down slightly in the next year from what it is in the current year. And so you will see that as well as a draft or a summary of the whole budget showing the major areas that are increased or decreased, as well as a full budget. Soon as we have those numbers, we can put together everything. We are hoping to be able to give all the buildings the amount of money that Dr. Hamilton agreed to based on the building defenses. And so a certain amount of money for each building in each category was allotted. It went into the budget. And we are hoping not to have to change that. We are hoping to give them everything that Dr. Hamilton has agreed is what they need for next year.
So again, in our efforts to make sure that there is alignment to district initiatives, sorry. In order to make sure that there is alignment between district initiatives and board goals, our budget defense process is one that looks very specifically at how principals plan to utilize their resources to address the board goals and ultimately the district goals, which we are fortunate enough that they are one and the same in our district. This includes an opportunity to reflect, assess, evaluate, and make determinations about which programs and services were worth continuing, doing a cost-benefit analysis. Ideally, we want low-cost, high-yield programs. When we look at how programs fit in the big scale of things, large scale of things, there are some things that are high-cost, high-yield. There are some things that are low-cost, low-yield, and some things that are low-cost, high-yield. And clearly, we want to ensure that our budget represents high-yield, low-cost items, but not at the expense of quality and results. So that's what the reflection portion of this process entails. And then establishing targets. Where do we want our students to be at the end of the year or at the end of their school experience, and working backwards from that? So making sure that schools have targets that they are working towards. And our job, of course, as central administration, is to make certain that we are providing schools with the resources that they need and therefore get to hold them accountable. You can't hold people accountable by establishing targets and not giving them the resources that they need in order to reach them. So that's what the target part of this process is about. And then, of course, planning. What is the MFR process, the Managing for Results process? How is it being implemented in a district? And ultimately, everything is centered around a student-focused holistic approach to ensure that our students are the beneficiaries of all the work that's being done in the district. That, along with this investment, the academic investment or our budget, leads to a sustainable program or academic excellence where our students and our community members are proud to be citizens and students here in Mount Vernon. So where did the investment go in 2021? Dr. Gorman is going to talk a little bit about this. But I do want to point out a couple of things. Actually, I'm going to ask Dr. Gorman and Mr. Silver to do this one together because there are some important elements that we all need to understand about this financial, our financial priorities for the 2021 school year, even with COVID, even with the deficit created by the city not surrendering the $16 million, even with the $7.5 million reduction that we created, we made in our budget in order to be fiscally sound, and still being able to say with confidence that we've been able to maintain our programs and services. Dr. Gorman?
Sure. So as we start, and that's why we put it at the top here, the expansion upon a diverse, high-quality equitable and responsive education during these unprecedented times. And they have been unprecedented. And as we've discussed and we've presented in front of you and sought national and state recognition, we believe this is a time to lead and move forward and to lead the way in digital literacy and reading and numeracy and mental wellness and social, emotional learning. And so we have thrown a lot of time and effort and resources to ensure that our kids are getting the tools they need to get that equitable and responsive education. We've spent an enormous amount of time, which is very important, with our staff, educating them on how to have tough, difficult conversations with students about social justice, about equity, about diversity, about using their voice and not just sitting back and having the kids be witness to what's going on in society. So we've put in a lot of resources there, and we will continue to do that. As we transition, we, you know, a couple of months ago, Dr. Hamilton kicked off our culinary kitchen. So Chef Ham was ready to go that night. We look forward to having kids in those kitchens in September and really embracing and opening a very productive academic program for them. Mr. Silver, you want to take the rest of this slide?
So you might say, this is not just the budget. This is other things besides the budget. It's the bond, it's the budget. The culinary kitchen was from a grant from Senator Biagi. And so if something didn't come from one thing, it would have had to come from another thing. So if the culinary kitchen couldn't have been from a grant from the state, we would have had to have paid for it from the budget. So things that are paid for from other areas are just a savings to us in the general fund. The bathroom renovations. We actually have a large grant that was just approved today, but it's an old grant, taking care of the bathrooms at Williams. Over, I think, $280,000 from the state to renovate bathrooms at Williams School. So I just want to point out that these things are mixed together. You can't separate one from the other. The facilities preparedness, Mr. Palicchio and his staff have worked on replacing floors in the buildings, particularly at Lincoln. We are now... We are now been required by the city, by the county, to remove all of the oil tanks that we have, and that's going to be a big job, but we have managed to figure out how to get state aid for it. And all of the cost of this will be aided in one year, instead of in 15 years, like most state aid for construction takes place. So we're very fortunate that we're going to be able to do that, that way.
Yes, Mr. Silver, part of, you mentioned our Michael Palicchio, doing yeoman's work over the summer and through the year, along with our teachers and our administrative union and our reopening committees, to make sure our schools were safe, to make sure that there were desks in place, that there was social distancing, that there are partitions, that there was procedures, signage was huge, right? Educating them on how to do virtual fire drills in a pandemic. All of this started to take over in facilities preparedness, in addition to the academic vision that we are accustomed to having in our district.
So we, through the bond, we completed all the work at the high school, including the mile-long walking, running path, which Mr. Palicchio and I walked on a couple of weeks ago. Window restoration, we've spoken about, flooring project, science lab, the last science lab was finished, I think that was at Hamilton School. That is now done. All the schools that need science labs have them, it's finished. And the food service has been helped through Trustee Mitchell's assistance, and things are better, and you can see the menus online, and you can see the nutritional value of the meals. And I'm going to go away from there before you say something. So the budget highlights, I think, this is you?
Sure. So as we move into next year, what has gone into this budget as we prepare to take this out to the public to vote on in a couple of months? Well, we want to maintain excellence in hiring the best and most qualified teachers in these times, right, that know how to navigate through that technology and these best practices of 21st century learning, so we're not starting behind the eight ball in a lot of ways. We need to address the COVID slide through intervention, so it's not good enough to just pick up and say, hey, we lost a year. Not only did we lose a year, we have to pick up that year, and it's proven research, the only way to get it back is to get additional time and targeted interventions to make sure that we're addressing the individual needs of students. We have a, we are starting this year a comprehensive rewriting and mapping of our curriculum. We are going, investing in a curriculum mapping software product, and it'll be available to all consumers, parents, students, teachers, anywhere around the world will be able to see where kids are supposed to learn and what they are learning. That transparency is incredibly important, as we continue to strive to take the educational practices to the next level in the district. We're increasing and looking at the possibility of increasing CTE offerings. We're piloting a dual-language program in kindergarten, meeting the needs and the responsiveness of our children, increasing engineering classes through a very popular and successful project, Lead the Way, continuing to support our music and fine arts. Of course, our STEAM practices are very important to take to the next level in mathematics and the sciences. The international baccalaureate programs, I was talking to Principal Gonzalez today, he was telling me about the impact that the avid IB kids have versus the non-avid IB kids, that they're really starting to excel and meet higher levels of learning through the SL and the HL courses that are, we are budgeting for. We are continuing to provide alternate pathways to colleges and careers, such as our new culinary program, barbering, cosmetology, and auto shop, and more. We're trying to support our early childhood initiatives and our investment programs, such as our pre-K offerings, continuing to invest in technology with a focus on reading and writing through balanced literacy.
Balanced literacy is something that I have been a huge, huge supporter of, and it is something that is directly related to our efforts to improve literacy in our district, and getting students on grade level by the time they are in third grade. So we have started pilots with the Balanced Literacy Initiative, and we are now expanding that, because we have demonstrated success with successful implementation of balanced literacy. And because schools are human resource-driven organizations, an investment in professional development is one of the best things we can do for our students, and make sure that they have the best and brightest teachers. So recruitment, professional development, and retention are key items to make certain that we accomplish the vision for, for our district. We clearly have the right recipe. And what I encourage the board to do, as you contemplate this budget, and our taxpayers to contemplate this budget, is look back where we were eight years ago, almost eight years ago now, and look at our progress. Look at what we've done, what we've been able to accomplish, and the progress has been slow but steady, which tells us we have the right things in place. We have abandoned practices that did not work. We have conducted appropriate efficacy studies around programs that were not yielding great results. Those items, those programs, those services that we were providing to students because they were popular, that were not getting us where we needed to be, have been replaced with more research-driven programs, like Balanced Literacy, like Envision, our math program. There are several things that we have done in the district to put us in a better position. And the more we hear about students being accepted into competitive colleges, or students being recruited by large companies, we know that we are, in fact, on the right track and doing the right things. We are continuing, in this budget, to maintain support services, and that includes our nurses, our counselors, and our clinicians, more than ever. The research is very clear that our students are dealing with a lot of trauma associated with, with COVID, and the impact of COVID. We need to, and their isolation, isolation as a result of COVID. So it is very important that we put an emphasis on these support services for our students, and to ensure that we are providing them with a culturally responsive curriculum, and one that is sustainable. That there are appropriate tiered levels of interventions in place, so that no matter where students are relative to their, where they fall in the continuum of academic success, that there are supports in place. So students who need remediation are getting remediation, and students who need enrichment are getting enrichment. The difference between the two is, obviously, when students are struggling, they need additional interventions and remediation, which means after-school programs, tutorial programs, Saturday programs, summer programs, and enrichment opportunities, gifted and talented programs, opportunities for students to have experience in STEM and STEAM, as well as explore CTE experiences, and of course, performances like the showcase that we mentioned earlier. We're looking at making certain that our community, our parent liaisons, so that our parents have a connection, feel connected to our schools. And we are working on a community school concept, which I'll be sharing more with you about in, in the future. We are very, very excited about a community school initiative here in the district, and what that will mean for our, our city, our students, and our parents. And of course, our, an investment in social, emotional learning. Now, more than ever, our students and our staff have to be supported and understand that in order to provide your best, your best ability to students, you have to be in your best health, physically and mentally, and we will be working to do that. In fact, we're having a health fair tomorrow to help our students, our families in particular, with this health fair. Kudos to the Office of School Improvement. I said, I want to have a health fair, and next thing I know, she said, give me the date. So kudos to Dr. B.C. for pulling this together. This health fair is very important, from my perspective, because it sends a message that we value you, we care about you, and we are a place of resources with the best and brightest, providing these services to our parents and families. We are also continuing our investment in facilities. Mr. Silver?
We have this down, this tag team down. So every five years, we have to do a building condition survey. You're aware, you've already approved this, that we do this. This will address critical safety issues at each school building, and we will be developing a five-year plan based on that, as well as, as what we're going to do to take care of these safety issues going forward. We'll be purchasing either one or two trucks, we're not sure, but the budget will reflect that option, so that we do have that option going forward. Again, continuing with the window replacement, we are revitalizing the concession stands at the high school. The facilities garage, used to be called the bus garage, is in pretty bad condition. We are renovating the bathrooms there, so that they can be used during public events. We're also fixing the gutters, doing the roof on that building. That building, should it have major renovations in the future, would be aidable, because it's considered a bus garage and not a fieldhouse by the state. These are the mandates that Dr. Hamilton mentioned earlier. Of course, most of the salaries are mandates, and our debt service is a mandate, but these are things we can't control at all. So the charter schools were, last year, about $9.2 million for about 420 kids that went to about 17 or 18 charter schools, one in Mount Vernon, Imani, and all the others in the Bronx, about 15 or 16 in the Bronx. And we have no choice, we pay between $18,000 and $30,000 a child, 18 for a child that doesn't require special services, and up to 30 or $31,000 for a child that does. Our health insurance has gone up for next year. We do collect some money from staff for their share of that, other employee benefits, such as retirement, social security. And then our obligation for community schools, this is a part of the aid that we get, but it's designated to be used for community schools, which we described a little bit earlier.
So of our total budget, $65 million of it is absolutely beyond our control. So, and that frankly, is, is one of the things, as we look at advocacy, and people often ask, well, what can I do? It's really important for us to start thinking more about how we can advocate for our district and get legislation in place, that does not put communities like Mount Vernon at a disadvantage. So when you think about $9.2 million going to charter schools, when there is no real evidence that charter schools are outperforming public schools in totality, it makes you wonder, how does this continue to exist and drain resources? And that's not to say that students in charter schools are not our kids, they're all our children. But we don't need to divide resources. And charter schools, in my estimation, should not be forced to be in competition with the, the public school district. So these are fixed costs, and I went off on a tangent there for a moment, but these are fixed costs that are non-negotiable, and $65 million is a large ticket, when you look at the budget in totality. In terms of budget efficiencies, Mr. Silver, you may as well go ahead and finish this.
Sure. I just want to mention one thing, our charter schools, there are some that say that we actually save money because of the money we spend to the charter schools, but we have not been able to demonstrate that we can save five cents. You can't take a second-grade class from a school and move it to the charter school. It's a kid here, a kid there, a kid there, and there's no savings whatsoever to us. It's just wasted money for us. Yes, it helps our children in another environment, but it doesn't help the, the school district. Our budget efficiencies, because of the retirement incentive that we had last year and continues this year, we will save about $850,000. Our textbooks have been very carefully designed, so that we will be moving towards digital textbooks, which will stop so much of the waste that we've experienced in the class. This timepiece will allow staff to be connected to, to our software, which will eliminate all of the paper that has to go through, be moved from one building to another, to the central office, manually keyed in by the payroll people, and subject to so much possibility of mistakes. And also the Envision, which is a part of the finance manager, there are a number of ways that Dr. Gorman is leading the effort to implement further Envision or software programs to improve education and to improve the, the operation of the district itself. Did you want to say something on that? You're good. Okay. We are moving more towards cooperative services through BOSI's, New York State bidding, any opportunity we have to do a bid through another organization, we do, we, there's a bid, this is called piggybacking, where anybody that has in their bid that somebody else can use it, we use it. So we will take bids, and that eliminates our having to bid some of these things ourselves.
The cooperative purchasing is a budget efficiency, in the sense that the more people you have, if, if we need to order a dozen pencils, and 12 other stu, school districts need pencils, then obviously, we can get them at a cheaper price. So when we are in these cooperative agreements with BOSI's and other entities, we have an opportunity to save money. And even our phone service, for instance, large-ticket items, we look for cooperative service opportunities to increase efficiencies or decrease costs.
Sure. We get our electricity through the New York Power Authority. We, our copiers, you may recall, last year, we had you approve this, we get our, all our copiers through BOSI's, and then we get BOSI state aid, around 45% of the cost of the copiers for the year comes back to us. This past year, they added on service for the first time to be a reimbursable expense. So all of our service for the copiers now goes through BOSI's. So this chart on the bottom shows what the taxes have been since 2014, when the current administration got here. And, I mean, Dr. Hamilton. And so the stop means that the taxes didn't increase in any of those years, and that's in red. And then, we're on the bottom chart, and then in the yellow was a small increase, that 0.89%, as Dr. Hamilton mentioned before, that held for all those years, and now the green is 1% more. The, the overall budget, you see, has expanded more than that. In fact, this budget, which we believe will be close to a 1% increase in the budget. Last year, it was 1.38. We're hoping that we can stay around 1% increase in the budget, will be the smallest percentage budget increase in the past seven or eight years. So that's what this, this all looks like. We depleted the reserves, we've talked about that. Now we have a smaller budget increase, because we have less reserves to use for that. State aid may change that, but we don't know. And that bottom line relates to the tribal amendment, which requires us to pay all, all staff that belong to the teachers' union a step increase, whether they, whether we have a contract or not, they're entitled to whatever their step is, that's part of the tribal amendment. The continued 0% tax has curtailed our future tax levy limit growth. I will explain that to you a little bit. But the state wants us to borrow money every five years, they want us to do a bond. When you do a bond, you have capital expenses. Capital expenses get added on to what you're allowed to charge for taxes. In the next slide, I'm going to try to explain it, although it's pretty hard to follow. If we didn't have this capital exemption, this capital expense, our taxes that we would be allowed to charge, to raise, would only be $130 million. We're at $135 now. That means we would have to cut $5 million from taxes if we didn't have these capital expenses to add on to the taxes. So the exemption now is $8 million. The exemption is the money we pay after we get state aid and after tax money. So this is what actually comes out of our pockets to pay for capital expenses. This gets added to the taxes that you're allowed to raise. So our tax cap this year is 2.47%. We could actually raise about $3.6 million if we wanted to, if the board agreed to that, but we don't feel that that's the right thing to do. But the more you raise the taxes, the more you can raise the taxes in, in the future years. Let's, let's go on to the next one. So on the bottom there, you could see, the very bottom right of the, of the white chart, it says $3.3 million. We could actually raise taxes $3.3 million or 2.47%. We could actually raise taxes $3.3 million or 2.47%. So we're starting off on the top of that white part, at $135 million is where we are now. Then a bunch of stuff comes off. It comes claims and judgments. There's a lot of things that come off which would reduce it to $130 million were it not for the capital expenses that come from having a bond and doing capital projects. That all gets added on. The maximum we could do would be $138 million in the next year. This is really hard to follow, and I'd be happy to explain it to anybody privately, if anybody would like, or we could do it again in another public session. But what happens is, we need to raise taxes for our bond rating. We need to raise taxes to be able to raise taxes. So we're raising taxes about $2 million less than we could by law this year.
And this zero tax levy increase has only worked because we have been strategic. We have been able to identify and secure critical exclusions based on capital expenditures, which Mr. Silver was just talking about. But we also have to have foresight. We also have to be able to forecast the needs of our district and the needs of our community. And because we have not raised taxes, the base upon which we can calculate the tax increase is less. So yes, it's great to be able to say we have not raised taxes. It's actually quite an accomplishment, but at the same time, it works against us when it's time to look at how that compounding effect impacts our ability to raise taxes moving forward. So in terms of long-range planning, the leadership with this board and administration, this exceptional cabinet that I'm privileged to work with, strategic planning and a budget, we have a recipe that works, and we know that that recipe works. There are always critics. We will always be subject to critics. In fact, that helps us sharpen our tools, and that's okay. But we do know that we are implementing best practices. We do know that we have sound educational research behind these recommendations, and this fiscal plan that's presented to you this evening is presented to you with confidence and with students in mind. So with that, I conclude this budget presentation, and we'll entertain any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Hamilton, Mr. Silver, and Dr. Gorman. This is really great, and I'd just like to say, we've come such a long way. The focus on forward-thinking, the focus on implementing technology, embracing technology, trying things, you know, that are different. The focus on advocacy, the grants, we really have, the team has done an outstanding job in terms of pulling every lever, working every relationship to make sure that we get our fair share, or at least enough, to sustain the programs that we've introduced. So I really applaud the entire organization. I think you've done a great job. And not for nothing, but achieving the 2020 vision on time and on budget was quite an accomplishment, and I'm very, very proud of the organization for what they did. And I know it's been a lot of effort and a lot of hard work. I know this year has been a lot of effort and a lot of hard work. And I think as we move forward, we're really, with our forward vision, with the Budget Committee and the Finance Department and Dr. Hamilton, we're able to anticipate some of the things that were really unimaginable a year ago when COVID hit. So we've been able to be flexible. That being said, you know, we realize that we've gone seven or eight years. We've been able to do more with less. We've really tapped into some great opportunities, but now we've probably reached the end of pulling rabbits out of a hat. So, you know, we will be doing Q and A now, and then we vote on this budget on, I believe, April 20th. One of the things I mentioned, is that the day we have to vote?
19th. 19th, Rick?
No, the next four meetings are the 20th. We have to adopt it by that Friday.
Okay, so that week. Now, I don't expect the trustees to vote on a budget that they have not seen and been able to properly vet to their satisfaction. So what I've discussed with Mr. Silver is that, and we're anticipating that by this weekend, the trustees will each get a copy of the budget, specifically the summary, the three parts of our, the three key parts of our budget, the summary, the increases, the decreases, where we found efficiencies, and we'll be able to look at that. And then next week, what I'd like to be able to do is have trustees submit questions. If we need to have a meeting, we can do a virtual meeting, or we could meet in person. We could have an incremental meeting where we entertain questions and concerns about the budget, but I want to make sure everyone is comfortable with the numbers as presented, comfortable with the recommendation that we're getting from the administration about this 1% increase. So we'll be communicating with you as Mr. Silver gets the information from the state and is able to kind of assemble a final budget. But we will be voting on it in two weeks, and then the community will be voting on it in six weeks.
Right.
May 18th, I believe, is the date of the referendum. So with that being said, any questions about what we've seen this evening? Questions, comments? Any and all are welcome. Trustee McOn.
Can you hear me?
No.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I got it real close here. Oh, my gosh. Thank you for the thorough presentation, and I look forward to reviewing the budget line by line, as we all do every year. But I just want to reiterate what has been said about the astonishing feat of surviving this year with unknown state aid, with a dispute, to put it mildly, with the city over some resources that are owed to us. And, you know, even with that deficit and with the budget cut, which was extremely advisable, even more so in retrospect, this is an extremely conservative increase proposal, given all the situations we've faced. And I just applaud the Budget Committee. I know it's a ton of work to put it together, and I'm surprised it's not higher. And I mean, you can go out and read the news already. There's many towns in New York already at or exceeding their caps this year, or expected to. So the fact that we're in such good financial shape as we are is not a miracle. It's not an accident. It's extremely diligent leadership, not by me, but by the people who are doing this every day, day in and day out. So thank you, and I look forward to reviewing it.
Is that good news? So as we are sitting here speaking, we're talking about advocacy. I literally just got a text from...
Somebody?
A legislator, yes, thank you. With our state aid numbers. Mr. Silver, you want to talk about them? You can speak to them better than I do, or you want to wait? Say it again?
I don't know if I can speak.
This represents, I almost looked at Chappaqua by accident, and they have almost nothing. This does show a, almost a $4.5 million increase in foundation aid, which is pretty large.
Absolutely.
It's hard to tell, there's no words next to it, just numbers, but I kind of know what the numbers are. It shows building aid, which we believe will be actually higher than is shown there because there was some building aid that has been submitted to the state that is not reflected in this, having to do with some of the completion of, like Mandela and a couple of other projects that's not reflected in here yet, so we believe that'll be a little bit higher. There are some aids that remain the same. We know the transportation aid will be substantially up, because our cost was substantially up this year. And the most important thing of all is that the governor's proposal to link all the aids together and then freeze them at a certain amount is gone. So that never happened. And this, we have to analyze it some more, but it shows an $11 million increase in aid. But we have to look at that carefully and see what it really means, and it shows a 10.96% increase. So we'll analyze these and put together a final document based on this, but I would say that what Dr. Hamilton wants to give the buildings, we should be able to do, and we should be able to do some of the other things that we had wished for, hoped for.
Is that, do we know if that's foundation aid, new foundation aid, or just foundation aid that we've been owed for a decade?
There's no words on here, so I can't say...
We'll figure it out.
No, the foundation aid, it could be part of the plan, the three-year phase-in plan for full foundation aid, but, Trustee McOn, it doesn't seem like enough to be that.
Right.
All right, well, it's, look, it's preliminary, very good news, so, great.
We'll take it.
Yes. So any other questions, or any questions?
No, the switch, turn the switch on. Push it towards you, the switch. There you go. Yep.
Thanks, Rick.
Hello?
Yes.
Mic check.
We hear you.
So I just want to thank you for the presentation that you just presented, and I am just asking for our community, how do you plan on showcasing the presentation that you just presented, maybe taking out some things, so it won't be so wordy, but how do you plan on showcasing it, maybe a town hall or something of that nature?
We actually do have several events planned where we, our road show, we call it, and it will be modified somewhat because we are in COVID right now, but generally, we hit some of the churches, some of the civic organizations. This year, we will be doing it a little differently. Do you have that schedule handy, Rick? Please, yes.
Our first budget presentation was this evening. The next one will be via Facebook Live on April 13 at 6:00 p.m. Our next one will be on April 21 at 2:30 p.m. Another one will be on April 28 at 11:00 a.m. We'll host a public hearing, which is mandated as part of the budget process, on May 4 at 6:00 p.m. And our final budget presentation prior to the election and budget vote will be on May 11 at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. Will you be using the Jimmy Neutron thing outside to just post?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
We've also, posters should be going up in the school buildings, in all the school buildings this week. They were printed last week while we were on break, and there'll be flyers distributed throughout the community, as well as advertising on social media and the district website.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We're not able to use the robo-call to promote the budget, but we can share the dates about the budget, but we can't promote it in that fashion.
Not me, I mean as far as the dates.
Yes, yes. We'll be robo-ing that, doing robo's on that, yes.
And the app.
Yes, and the district app, yes. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments at this juncture? All right, well, it looks like, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It looks like we're, Mr. Silver, we're going to be in pretty good shape for getting all the information to the trustees before the weekend. And, you know, as you go through, some of us like to parse the budget, go through line by line, some just like to look at the broad strokes of it, but we will be, you know, providing you with the summary and the budget. And I really request that you get your questions in early next week so that we can, excuse me, can address them, or at least sometime next week, so we can address them, since we're going to be meeting on the 20th to vote. I want you all to be informed and be comfortable with what you're voting on, because we will own this for the next year. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, my pleasure. Madam President, before I yield my mic, I just want to take this opportunity, there's an unfamiliar face here that some of you may not have met. This is Jonathan Walters. Jonathan is my admin assistant. He is actually here being trained on how to officiate a board meeting. As you know, well, the board knows, but the public may not know, one of our goals administratively at the direction of our board is to identify succession planning, so that we have systems in place that are not totally reliant or dependent on any one person. So as the next part of that, we are working on having someone who can sit in on Rick's spot in the event that Rick needs to be out or is away, or any gaps that we may have. So Jonathan is here tonight and training.
Great, great. Do we have any committee reports this evening? Trustee McOn.
I'll be brief. I just, we did have the first, since I missed the last meeting, we did have the first ad-hoc committee meeting regarding expanding CT programs at the high school. That was great. We'll have another meeting on April 15 at 1:00 p.m. via Zoom, and I'll provide an additional update, a more comprehensive update after that.
Great, thank you. Anything else? I know we were, the schools were closed last week. Anything else? Okay, let's move on to the business at hand, which is the resolutions. May I have a motion to approve Human Resources Resolution 4.1?
Motion.
Any questions or concerns about Human Resources Resolution 4.1? There being none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion?
I'm sorry.
Is that the first one?
Did he send me the...
Trustee White?
Yes.
Isn't it the second one?
No, it's not that one.
I'm sorry.
4.2.
I got it.
Yeah, may I have?
My apologies.
It's all good. Good to double-check. May I have a motion to approve Human Resources Resolution 4.2?
Motion.
Any questions?
Yes. What, is there a specific reason that is...
That we can, why these replacements are happening?
The replacements in the program? I think it's availability.
It's just a teacher not available to teach it, and so we had to substitute that person for someone else, and they can't be paid without board approval.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? May I have a motion to approve Business Office Resolution 5.1?
Motion.
Wait a second.
Yes. There was two.
Trustee, right. Any questions about the three components of the Business Office Resolution? All right.
Can I ask a question? Is this, sorry, this tax beneficiary settlement, was this discussed at executive last meeting? Okay, I'm going to abstain for that reason, then.
Okay.
I was not here.
No problem.
I'm abstaining also.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
I abstain.
Abstain.
Motion carries. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve School Improvement Resolution 6.1?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain. Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve School Improvement Resolution 6.2?
Motion. Motion.
Any questions?
I just had a general kind of question for Dr. Hamilton. Is, is this consistent with the summer school kind of budget and plan we had in previous years, or is this ramped up? Because I know there's been a lot of...
This one is consistent.
Yeah.
But we just got information that summer school will be expanding.
Right.
So you will probably get, next meeting or the meeting after that, BC? A revised...
February 20th.
Okay.
Because normally, all schools and all grade will be getting summer school this year from pre-K through 12.
Right.
Everybody.
Great, excellent.
So you will be getting another summer school resolution. That information just came out.
For secondary.
Yes.
Okay.
Got it. So this, this budget, this current resolution is based on assumptions for a program consistent with last summer, but we anticipate it will be expanded.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any other questions? That's great news, by the way, about summer school. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Abstain?
Abstain.
Trustee White abstains. Motion carries. Okay, great, thank you. Motion to approve Student Services Resolution 7.1?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions about 7.1? All good? Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
What's wrong with this agenda? There's no buildings and grounds.
Well, I'm sure we could come up with some change orders. Come on, Mr. Palicchio.
Just get prepared, because we're going to have a capital reserve now.
You had, you had all weekend to contemplate that. Okay, may I, wait, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Superintendent's Resolution 9.1 for merged athletic activities.
Motion. Second.
Any questions about our athletics?
Sorry, I was just going to ask, why not the STEAM students? Why is this just...
I was going to say the same thing.
The Arts Academy?
Are the arts students also considered activities?
Yeah, it's, this is all. This is a combination STEAM, performing arts, and Mount Vernon High School combining all the athletic programs.
They're included in the recommended action.
Oh, I apologize, I misread it. I'm sorry.
I have a question. How will they be, will they be transported?
Some students are, and I'm not sure what the eligibility is, but I do know I just approved a transfer. So yes, transportation will be provided for some of those students from the Thornton and STEAM.
STEAM Academy.
Yes.
So we're giving, you know, these opportunities to all our students, following our equity.
And just to be clear, this is a resolution for next school year. So the purpose of this is so that we can plan?
That is correct.
Yes.
Right, accordingly, yeah.
Any other clarifications needed?
Nope.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve Superintendent's Resolution 9.2?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? This is the continuation of the program from last year.
Correct.
Yes.
I was just wondering whose name? Is it our name? Are we hyphenating? I'm just, you know, inquiring minds. I read it, and I was like, wait a second. Do we go by like majority rules that we wear there in Jersey? No?
I always thought it was them joining our team.
That's why I was just making sure.
Right, right.
Yeah, we're merging, but they need us.
This is the third year we've done this, right?
It's the second or third?
The second.
Definitely the second. I think it is the third, though.
It will be the third.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is combining the, for the, for the community, the Bronxville and Mount Vernon volleyball.
Quick question. I have a question regarding the cost. Who foots the cost for those team members coming from Bronxville? Do we do it, or does Bronxville?
Bronxville pays their transportation and...
And that's it. So we foot the cost of everything else?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait.
You're saying it's five, five kids that'll be coming in from Bronxville?
I don't know what the specific number is.
It varies.
It says five in the abstract.
Their volleyball team, Trustee, right.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Abstain? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve acceptance of the minutes from February 23rd?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. All right. We need a motion to go into executive session for...
A motion to enter executive session for the purposes of discussing the employment history of a particular person or persons and collective bargaining negotiations with the Mount Vernon Federation of Teachers, as well as current and pending litigation.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This concludes the public portion of our meeting this evening, so thank you very much for joining us. We will now be moving to our executive session. We look forward to seeing you on April 20th, same time, same place. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.